It's on the computer now.
And so now it says you're streaming live.
Perfect.
So you can open your meeting whenever you want.
Okay. All right, why don't I do that? No, okay.
Let me bring the members in.
You want me to bring them in for you, Jess? Are you good?
Um, if you want to.
All right, here's John. Okay.
Oh, you know what? I think you need to make me a co-host.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm a panelist right now.
See Amy and John.
You can see it. Got a cat too involved here. I mean, what's the cat's name?
That's lost.
Amy, you're outside. The microphone's off, Amy.
We can hear you, John.
Now, this is the office.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so who do we have?
Jesse, tell me when you want me to start.
All right, we're still missing a couple of members.
All right, Tom Daniels, I think, has just come.
Yep.
And there's Amy. I see Amy. Tom Daniels is here.
I'm here.
Okay. I was, how about Wayne? Is Wayne coming or?
Wayne's here.
Wayne is here? Are you there, Wayne?
Yeah, he's muted, though.
Yeah.
I don't see a video for Wayne.
Yeah, I think Wayne's got to unmute himself, too, or.
Jesse, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Wayne.
Yeah, we, I can, I can hear you now, too.
All right, so we've only got four members present right now. So we can't really start.
Do we know, is every, is everyone coming?
This is, I know. We can start if we have a quorum of the board. We need five to hear a petition, but we're not hearing any petitions.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we could start anyway.
If you want to, you can.
Yeah, no, I'm ready. Are you ready, Jess?
I'm ready.
Okay, well, I'm, as I said, this is a meeting of the South Kingston Rhode Island Zoning Board of Review. Members present, we have John Bernardo, Richard Jurzak, okay, Thomas Daniels, and William Rosen, okay? Also present are the South Kingston zoning official, Wayne Pimental, the South Kingston Administrative Associate, Jessica Spence, okay? Let's see. Attorney Amy Goins, South Kingston attorney, and Colleen Camp, the town of South Kingston manager's executive assistant, okay? Now, I'm not sure, we're not going to vote on anything, so I guess I don't, I'm not going to go through on the method of voting or any of that, nor am I going to go through and explain what a variance is versus a special use permit or anything to that effect. But what I will do now is I'll turn this back over to our host and, and who's going to take care of some of the administrative issues. So go ahead at this point, host, whoever the host.
Hi, Rick. It's Jessica.
Okay, Jessica.
So the things I would like to go over, um, first, I'm going to introduce the board members who are present. Um, so John Bernardo's there, William Rosen, Tom Daniels, and then Rick Jurzak. Um, I'm sorry if you said that already. I'm having a little technical difficulties. Um, let me see, sorry.
Wayne is there.
Just bear with me one minute, I'm sorry. Okay, so what I want to go over is basically the roles that everyone is going to have when they're part of the meeting. Um, the board members will all be panelists, and they have the power to mute themselves, unmute their, bring their video back and forth. Um, we think that the video should stay on at all times, and basically the mute should stay on it, uh, should not stay on, you should stay unmuted. Um, all of the applicants will also be invited in as panelists. They will stay fully muted until, um, they're actually called by Rick, and that goes with their video as well. Um, at that point, when Rick calls their petition, they will become visible to the public. Um, testimony would be given, just like it normally is, and then, when they're done, Rick would ask if there's any members of the public who, um, need to speak, um, have anything they wish to say. They would be the attendees. So at that point, if you're an attendee, you would raise your hand. So, um, to raise your hand, there's a couple of different options. If you are calling in by phone, um, you have to kind of toggle back and forth a little bit, and star nine is raise hand feature. Um, if you're on the computer, at the bottom, you'll see a little button that says raise hand. So, you know, we'll kind of get through that, um, as best we can. Attendees will not have any video, and we're doing that, um, so we don't have stuff like Zoom bombing happen, because that's just the, the general link that they are, um, coming in on. They're not coming in on a private link. Um, Rob Cagnetta just joined the meeting. So then it's, you know, we're just going to vote like we normally do. Um, the thing that I have to kind of stress is that when people are speaking, meaning board members, staff, applicants, is we really want you to use your name prior to speaking. So it's, it's clearer for the record, and for, some people are only calling in on phone, so they are not getting any type of visual, so they don't necessarily know who's speaking if you're not going to identify yourself, you know, upfront. Um, there's some awkwardness that kind of happens with this. There's pauses, it gets a little glitchy. Um, we're going to try to go with this, you know, as smooth as we can. Like, right now, for example, as I'm talking, I'm echoing in my ear what I'm saying, so I'm like hearing my own conversation twice, which is a little distracting. Um, some of the features is kind of what I wanted to go over with you guys. Um, we can share screens, so when the applicants are up, and I'm going to hit share screen now, and I'm going to bring this over to Google Earth. So now everyone can see my screen, and from here, you know, we'll type in an address. And we'll see Google Earth do, you know, this is all showing kind of live time on my screen, and then this is the view. So now, as panelists, at the top of your screen, if you kind of bring your mouse up there, a toolbar is going to come down, and on that toolbar is a couple of cool features. You're going to see where it says that it's a screen share. Um, but above that is a, um, a little, looks like a pencil, and it says annotate. If you click on that, from there, you have all different things you can do. You can put check marks on the, on the, see how I'm adding little arrows? You can put text box, so if you had any questions, like, where? So it's just kind of helpful when someone brings up a site plan. You'll be able to kind of zero in on where they're talking about. Um, as the host, I have the ability to clear all drawings. Um, as the panelist, you can clear your own drawings. So I don't know if anyone wants to kind of fool around on that for a minute and see how it works, and if you have any questions with it.
Well, I don't see it at the top of my screen, so.
So it should be at the top. You might have to move your mouse up there, and it comes down as a little drop-down box.
I see a map. Can we zoom into it?
Oh, where's the zoom options?
Yeah, view options.
Okay. So someone's drawing.
Oh, I see, okay.
I am. It's down on, it's under the drop-in box under annotate.
And I will have all of the applicant exhibits and everything kind of preloaded, so as they're called, um, you know, we'll bring them up. And like Wayne just put the arrow over here, and it says his name on it. So does anyone have any questions about that?
Okay, the drop-in box says, uh, request remote control, exit full screen, annotate, what's annotate?
That's the button that would mark the drawing.
Okay. And what's side-by-side mode? Well, that's what we're on now.
That's your screen view.
Yeah. Okay, got it.
And then I can hit, like, clear all drawings, and then everything goes away. You would have the option to just say clear my drawings. So then if we hit stop share, it goes back to the normal screen. Um, another thing is the view. Um, on the top right, there is a little, it's either going to have like nine little squares that look like a gallery view, so you'll see everyone who's speaking. Or, oh, and there's Wayne. Or you can go to speaker view, which highlights the speaker specifically. So everyone can kind of see how that works.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, John.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Where's the gallery view again?
On the top right.
I only got speaker view up there.
So if you click on speaker view, it should give you, it should switch the screen.
Okay. Ah, got it, okay.
Jessica.
Yes.
Uh, I just got a quick question. For the applications that we've received objection letters?
Yes.
Should, should Rick read those into the record?
I think that's more of a question for Amy.
Yes.
Um, I do have them on file.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, maybe we can take a little break from talking about the technical stuff of Zoom, if you don't mind. I want to get into that question, which is important, and I know Tom wants to hear about it, and y'all want to hear about it. People are complaining about the fact that, um, we are holding zoning board meetings during this time. Um, the governor, Governor Raimondo's executive order 20-05 was issued on March 16th. It expires today, so we are all waiting to see what will be posted. Um, and as soon as it is posted, I will forward and let you know. The one that is currently in effect limits remote meetings to those held for an essential purpose, and that's defined as, one, either necessary for continued government operations, or two, um, to allow the public body to meet statutory or regulatory deadlines. There is no further explanation or clarification of what that means. The new, the extension of that executive order may provide some additional clarity. Um, and Andy from our office has been working to, um, to request the governor to specify that all zoning and planning board meetings are for an essential purpose. Um, so it has been, we have decided, after some internal debate and discussion on this, that zoning board meetings are considered essential. People still need to go forward with their projects. We need, we need to, allow some bit of economic activity to continue, and development can't continue unless the zoning board acts. And back in March, when we thought maybe this was only one month, that, you know, one calculus of the issue, and now in April, we see clearly it's not going away anytime soon. We could do, could be doing remote meetings, you know, for the whole summer into the fall, who knows how long. Um, it's, it's a different calculus. So my advice to the town and to the zoning board is, we need to try to, and I know everybody has been making incredible efforts to, you know, staff, Jess and Wayne and Colleen, um, in, ensuring that all of us are well-versed in this platform, and that applicants and objectors have as much right to participate and be heard and, um, review documents as they would, you know, stepping into town hall. So if people are raising specific objections, I think we can acknowledge that. All right, for the record, your objection is acknowledged. Then ask, you know, ask people to state what their substantive issues are. Um, you know, they have the right to challenge our decisions made over Zoom, just as they would before, um, you know, before Zoom was implemented. So, um, at this point, I think I, I can answer questions. So as far as objection letters, um, you do not have to read them fully into the record unless you want to, Rick. Um, but you should be noting, and, and when an application is called, um, when the agenda item is read, the first thing that should be done, so everyone is on the same page, is listing what documents the board has before. So the application, the plan, and then any objection letters, you know, letter from John Doe dated March 14th. And you can kind of summarize it. Um, you know, you, you don't need to go into details. Some of the letters are long, some of them are not long. Um, you can say, you know, noting objections, and then, um, let anyone know that, because sometimes people just send letters and don't go to the meeting. Sometimes people send letters and then want to speak additionally. So you can let people know that, um, we've received their objections, and, and when it's, you know, when the public hearing is open, um, we'll be taking comments. Does anyone have any questions about, um, that aspect? Tom, I know you were wondering about it.
Uh, I'm not sure I have any questions. Uh, I felt that the individual that happens to be a, appear to be a strong objector doesn't have access to Zoom. Um, apparently is uncomfortable based on her letter with a telephone appearance. And, and again, you know, it seems to me that that's not an essential, uh, application in that it's been, it's been approved by, uh, for a septic two years ago. I mean, it just doesn't seem to be essential that we couldn't hold off until maybe we can get back to meeting in person and, and deal with that specific objector. You know, I just think that I, I'm, I'm really concerned about due process, and I'm, I'm concerned about, uh, an individual that doesn't have access to Zoom and feels uncomfortable with the technology. She's probably obviously an older person and is uncomfortable, and, um, that's what I'm concerned about. I'm really concerned about, uh, due process here.
Yeah. I have a few things to say on that. Number one, Jess, didn't that, didn't that objector email in?
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, okay. So it's someone who has access to a computer. Now, she didn't say she doesn't have access to Zoom. I remember what the letter said. She said, I do not Zoom. Whether or not she wants to, that's not the same, you know, does she have access? Um, if she has the ability to email in an objection letter, I'm assuming that she has either a landline or a cellphone. So they may not want to call in, but I think we have made efforts, right? Posting the application materials on the website, letting, um, you know, specifically modifying our, a butter's notice, um, and agenda to include very detailed instructions for participating, right? Due process, notice, and an opportunity to be heard. Um, the only thing that would stop someone from, and, you know, participating in the hearing is, I don't have a phone, I don't have internet access, or for someone who does, you know, um, the power went out at my house, and I couldn't call in. And those are issues that we're going to have to deal with on a case-by-case basis. But as for whether someone would prefer to go to town hall or call in, you know, frankly, I'm sure there are a lot of people who would have preferred to call in before this was an option, so, um, and, and I want to be very careful about drawing distinctions between different types of applications. I think we either have to say that they are all essential, or none of them are essential. With that one in particular, it would be my recommendation, and, um, I can't recall if the applicant has an attorney.
Um, Amy, I, I did receive an email from an attorney today, based on that one, so.
So that attorney will be advised of the, um, objection letters, and I think what we had discussed a couple days ago was that, um, staff would notify applicants that all objection letters will be posted on the website. Um, so that way, in, in some sense, it's almost a process improvement, at least pre-meeting, right? The meeting itself, this is all going to, it, it's going to go, it's going to be slow, and it's going to take a lot of getting used to. But as far as a process improvement for public access to application materials, it's great. Now they're on the website.
Um, I have also added the hyperlink to the agenda, too, so every, all the documents are attached to the agenda.
Great. So, um, so my recommendation would be for, um, applicants who, for applications where there are objection letters, the applicant should be notified, um, and then they can make their own decision about whether they want to go forward. Um, but the manager thinks, and the council thinks it's important for us to keep the wheels of government moving.
Look, Rick Jurzak here. One, hey, one thing I would remind everybody. You, you haven't been announcing your name. Someone calls in, I think it's important to do that again before you speak. Jesse, I'm going to ask you to, you know, the suggestion that we list, Amy just made, that we go through every documents in the file. I'm not going to have those files, so you're going to, I'm going to turn that over to you and ask you on every file and say, uh, Jessica, will you read what's in the file? Okay, or list what's in the file. Now, with regard to objection letters, it's always been, uh, my practice to read the objection letters when we're in a live session, so I'm going to read the objection letters, okay, into the file. And, uh, again, on that one, Jesse, I think you're going to have to email me all those objection letters, okay? I don't know that I have any of those. If you could just, there can't be that many. How many are there?
Uh, between all the petitions, there's probably four or five.
Okay, would you just then email me those before the meeting? And then I can, and then if you, if I forget, please, uh, list, well, you're going to list them as your.
I'm going to list them.
List them, so, and, but I want to, I want to read those in, okay? Uh, a couple of things I, I just want to say before we, uh, before we move on. Remember, we were going to talk about time on this thing, too. There, there's a lot of petitions here. Okay, so what, what's the general feeling of the board members of when we should start the last petition on any particular night? Okay, uh, how do you gentlemen feel? I mean, do you feel, uh, 10:30 is, is for the start, the last petition? 10 o'clock, uh, 11:30, 12 o'clock? I mean, you tell me. What do, what do we do?
Governor Nardos says 10 o'clock.
Okay. You feel 10 o'clock, John Bernardo? How about you, Tom? Mr. Daniels?
10 o'clock is fine with me.
Okay, William Rosen?
Well, starting 7 o'clock is going to be difficult, because the room you're looking at is my, now my grandson's room, and he's going to be going to bed. Uh, I'm going to have to figure out some other way to get to the meeting, but I will, uh, and I would agree to 10 o'clock, yeah.
Okay, and how about you, Mr. Cagnetta?
Yes, I, uh, I've been sick, so I'm going to do my best to stay vertical for as long as I can. So I, I think I'll be fine. So.
So.
Not COVID sick, but I've been sick. It's a great time to get sick, because what else you got to do?
All right, so, so just to summarize, 10 o'clock will be, will be the last petition that is taken, and we will go through that petition, uh, whatever it may be. Now, also, uh, if you remember, Jesse, you were going to, uh, you were going to go through and list what you thought were going to be the quick ones, okay? So that we, we're going to try to do this so we can get as many petitions done as we can. We do have to go through and, uh, and do the first group first, right?
So, uh, this is Jessica speaking. Um, out of the first group of petitions, the petition for Brute Awakenings has requested a two-month, uh, continuation until our June hearing. So that was one that we thought would probably run a little bit longer. Um, other than that, they're all pretty straightforward, until we get to some of the ones that we were talking about previously. So I, I think they should all go pretty quickly.
John Bernardo, is somebody typing? I can hear somebody typing.
I think Wayne is, he's at work.
Sorry about that, John.
All right, that's cool.
I don't know why that's coming through.
You can mute it, maybe.
Yeah, that, that's something to consider. So if, you know, if you hear a lot of background noise in your house, like, all of a sudden, or, you can mute yourself.
Please.
Hello? Bill Rosen here. Um, couple of questions. Uh, the March 18th meeting, the petitions on the March 18th meeting, are those going first or second?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Um, I guess that's the only question I have right at the moment.
They'll be first, and I will be posting the agenda tomorrow, and I'll make sure you get a copy of that. Um, and if anyone, any attendees are here, um, if we don't get through everything, we will be meeting on the 29th to hear the, the rest of the agenda.
Jess, it's Tom. Um, do, do you want to go through setting the background for people?
Sure. So on the background, um, you've all got the picture. You've got it saved somewhere where you can access it. I use my desktop. Um, at the bottom left of your screen.
Can you send me one? I don't, I don't remember getting it.
Sure. Um, at, hold on one second here. Colleen, could you send that?
Yes.
And I will send you his email.
Okay, perfect.
Well, I'm, I'm probably going to have to have a new email, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll get you one after the meeting, Bill, and then you can call me, and we can go over it over the phone.
Okay.
So at the bottom left of the screen, if you kind of toggle your mouse around, you'll see the, the phone and a little up arrow, and then a start video. Next to the start video, there should be an up arrow. If you click on that, you're going to see something that says virtual background. We all seen that?
Yeah.
All right, so then you're going to see, it's going to say none. There might be some stock photos, like I have behind me, and then there'd be a little plus arrow. So if you hit the plus arrow, it's going to ask you to access your photos or, or whatever. So you'd say, yes, access your photos, and then you would just download it in from your photos. Is that making sense?
We only do that once, right?
Yep, it'll save it.
All right.
So, um, I know the planning board discussed this in their kind of technology session. With technology, there's always the scenario that technology can crash. So we obviously need to have five voting members for the meeting to happen. If anyone loses connection, what I would like to happen is to text me right away, and I'll make sure you all have my cellphone number, so that we were aware of it. Um, the technical review committee had run into an instance where a member dropped off, and they weren't aware of it, because sometimes screens freeze, and you think they're still there. So the minute you go down, text me, and then we'll start working. So, the minute you go down, text me, and then we'll start working on getting you back up and running. Um, if we need to, we'll do a brief pause of the meeting, um, to bring all the members back. If we can't get you back and we don't have a voting quorum, I, I mean, we'd have to reschedule the meeting at that point. Um, anything you wanna say on that, Amy?
I mean, there should be a way for the public to notify staff. Yes, so, and if somebody's, if someone's, um, electric power goes out at their house, there's nothing we can do about that, if it's townwide, then we're gonna have a bigger problem, you know, if somebody's dog chews a wire and the router is off. But there should be some way for the public to notify us, you know, especially, let's say, if it's an objector speaking and then they're suddenly cut off, well, you know, did they hang up in anger, or has their connection been interrupted, you know? Zoom, I think, is pretty stable, and there's a way to check whether the system nationwide has any issues. Um, so let's think about that, what that would be.
Okay. Um, we do have, now, if someone loses power or connection, this won't work. But we do have the question and answer available to the public. Um, what we wanna be clear on is we're only gonna use that question and answer for technical issues. We don't want people from the public typing in questions about particular petitions. Um, they will get a response back that says you need to wait for the public comment section, and you'll need to raise your hand to speak. Um, but it's basically kind of a, you know, my video keeps glitching out, or my, my phone keeps glitching, you know, whatever, that we can kind of hopefully troubleshoot them through that before they lose connection completely. Um, back to the phone, the people who are on phone only, um, they don't have, the options are a little bit different, I know I kind of covered this earlier, but the big thing to know is star six is mute and unmute, and star nine is raise your hand. So those would be things that, at the beginning of the meeting, we're gonna kind of address with the public, that this is how you get in, we're gonna cover how to raise your hand, um, if you're on computer, you know, stuff like that. And a minute ago, I just saw that an attendee had raised their hand, um, and now they put it down, so it's probably just someone, you know, just kind of playing around with it on their side. So, we, I will be aware of attendees raising their hands during the meeting. I also kind of need the board members just to kind of cursory be aware, because someone from the board, m- mostly the chairman, is gonna need to direct me to unmute the attendee. I will not just unmute them because I see their hand raised. So it's kind of important to keep that in view. Um, everyone's computers have the potential to view this system a little bit differently. I don't know if, um, well, let me tell you how I have mine set up. I have it in gallery view, and then on the right hand, I show all of the participants and the attendees. So if you're not showing that participant panel, if you bring your mouse down to the bottom, the bottom bar will pop up, and you'll see that it says participants sixteen. And if you click on that, it brings up that bar. And you'll see right now that we have eleven panelists and five attendees. So, like, during the actual zoning board meeting next week, we're gonna have a ton of panelists to start with, because all of the applicants are invited in as panelists. They will be muted and their video will be off, um, but they're all gonna be there. And then the attendees will just be the general public. Does anyone have any questions on that?
This is Rob Cagnetta, so are they, um, are they self-muting, or is there gonna be sort of someone in control of the meeting?
I will be doing that, so, and, um, there'll be someone else with me, like, right now, Colleen's with me, um, and she's kind of watching the meeting also. So, we're kind of doing the background on that. And it's important to note that I may unmute you, but you still may have to unmute yourself, that sometimes like almost a double unmute.
Just do that with the microphone, so, it's fine. Jessica, could you, um, try, like, one of the attendees, Melissa Toll is on there, see if she can raise her hand, and you could allow her to talk?
Sure, Melissa, would you raise your hand? So I'm gonna hit allow to talk, and then I'm gonna hit unmute.
Hello?
Hi, Melissa.
Oh, good, you can hear me, yeah, um, I'm Melissa Toll, and I, um, am listening just to kind of understand this, because I'm interested in one of the uh, petitions that will be up next week related to Brood Awakenings. Um, so, actually, I'm not just interested in this, but many of my neighbors are, I live in the neighborhood um, adjacent to, um, that proposed location. Uh, and so, I'm just wondering, will this be on the agenda for next week, or is it or is it getting proposed till June? Should we kind of virtually show up?
Or not? What is gonna happen? Um, the, the attorney, uh, for Brood Awakenings has requested an extension until June. So, that will be the first petition called on Thursday, I'm sorry, next Wednesday. And, basically, the, the petition will get continued, the attorney will ask for a continuance, state his reasons why, the board will vote on it, and, you know, more than likely can grant the continuance. But no actual, like, testimony in regards to what's going on will happen.
So, um, I know that, um, myself, as well as some of my neighbors, have the intention of emailing or mailing in some objections. Um, we should hold off on that as well until that June date, or is that something that is useful for you guys to have this week?
I think she can, this is Amy Goins, legal counsel, I think you can feel free to put in your objections now. Um, just be advised, sometimes when applications are continued, um, plans can change. Just be aware that the plans that are in, uh, submitted to the application now, it's, it's possible that they could change. So, so feel free to submit your objections now, there, they'll be kept in the file, they'll be noted, um, and, and they'll be, you know, recognized when the application is heard.
Um, sorry, I, uh, I, I had a thought, but now it's gone.
Melissa, this is Wayne. Uh, I just wanna let you know, hello, that the applicants will not be sent out another notice.
Oh, that was my question, thank you, you're reading my mind here.
Alright, Amy, maybe, Amy, you could talk on that?
Right, there's a requirement that the applicants send one certified notice, and the, the date of the meeting, um, at which the petition will be considered is indicated. The idea is that anyone interested would show up, and then they would hear the applicant request to continuance, and continuance requests are granted as a matter of course, especially when it's the first, uh, request, and especially in, in these times.
Sure.
So, so, by attending, and if it's calling in, you'll be on notice that the, um, petition will be continued, and, um, we'll make sure everybody is aware of the new date. Did you, June, Jess?
It's June, yeah, I believe it's, I'll tell you in one second.
June seventeenth.
Okay, yes.
Okay, well, then I will reach out to neighbors and encourage them to kind of show up to hear that officially on uh, next Wednesday, and then we will look forward to either doing this then, um, or, uh, or hopefully in person, although that seems increasingly like unlikely.
And Melissa, that will be the first petition that's heard.
Okay, great, thank you, right at seven o'clock, okay, that's wonderful to know. Um, and thank you for all of your efforts, I was really concerned about, um, being heard, uh, and I'm, I'm encouraged to see that you guys are, are equally concerned about that, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. So now that Melissa's done, I'm gonna disable talking, and I'm gonna lower her hand, she could have lowered her own hand too. So now, if anyone else wished to speak, you know, the chairman can ask, is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? And he'd do this at every public section of every application.
And I think, this is Rick Chirzak, I think we'll, well, that will probably be dealt with fairly easily because it's gonna be by petition. Um, just in a meeting, I would ask, is there anyone who wants to speak in favor or opposition to the petition? So then, at that point, we'll be looking for people to raise their hand, and either you or I will see them, so we should, hopefully, we'll catch every one of those, okay? Is there anyone else who wants to speak on anything else right now, who's not?
Can I just jump in, uh, Jess, just one moment, um, chairman, so you see one of your panelists, you're a zoning board member, raised his hand, I think you all should be able to see it on his thumbnail in the upper left, it's like a little hand raise.
Yeah, Tom. Yep.
You don't see Tom's?
We don't see, I, Colleen, I can see it in the participant list, but maybe it's only the host who can see it.
I, I think that's only a host feature, cuz I can see that also.
So then-
But that's checking in the participant list, you would see that there's a little blue hand under panelists.
And so if you make your, your, uh, chair a co-host, if-
But can I ask you, Colleen, do we have to be that formal, can't? I mean, we, if, if someone, if Tom wants to speak, and no one else is speaking, generally, generally at these meetings, what will end up happening is we'll go through and I'll say, uh, well, any questions, board members, and if Tom, Tom, i- i- at a meeting, Tom wouldn't interrupt anyone else, he would say, yes, I would want, and I don't know, do I necessarily have to acknowledge him?
No, this is, this is your, this is your meeting, you, you-
Yeah, I mean, I, so-
How you wanna run it, sure.
We've never had an issue that we have to be that formal, I don't wanna, I don't wanna feel that if I missed a little blue hand here, if, if the board members wanna speak, as long as they're not interrupting other people, or, or making it so it's impossible for, for the, for everybody to, you know, understand who's speaking, then so be it.
I, I just jumped in to mention that just because it is your work session and your training on this, just if you,
Okay.
If you did see that, or you wanted that to be able to be seen, you could do that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just afraid, Colleen, I'll miss it, Rick Chirzak here, I mean, I just said the little, the little blue hand.
No, a- absolutely, you're, it's your meeting, you, you run it, how, how you see fit, I know the council the other night, they started off, I believe the, uh, council president said, um, that they would leave their mics open, and they would, uh, speak when they felt, like you just said, when they needed to, and then if it got too bunchy, everyone starts talking over one another, then you can kind of smooth it out and say, okay, let's raise hands if you need to, but that's totally your call, how you all want it, yeah.
Uh, that's how most of the, like, I know planning's kind of doing that, we're trying to keep this as organic as possible. Um, you know, the big things that we, the structure is stating your name and stuff like that.
Alright, okay.
Okay, a question for Amy, we have an item on the agenda, which is the revised written decision, um, can we have a copy of that prior to the meeting?
I'm glad you asked about that, that is going to be heard on the twenty ninth, I just, I think it was yesterday, Jess, I, um, received confirmation from the applicant's attorney on appeal that he wanted to go forward, but on the twenty ninth. So, we'll all be receiving that, I will say no later than next Friday, the twenty fourth, on the twenty ninth. You can feel, board members can feel free, and we'll put this in the email, to contact me directly individually, um, not copying the rest of the board with any comments before the meeting on the twenty ninth.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have one, one question, um.
Bill Rosen speaking.
Meeting, Jessica mentioned to me about how I might become a full member, Bill Marx might become a full member, whatever, is, is anything decided about that?
As of right now, I am not aware that the council has heard this and has moved people up, I don't think they're considering that essential business right now. So, at this point, um, you're still an alternate.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, John Bernardo, Bill, you get more money as a full member, so.
I realize that.
Don't say that.
You might get combat pay though for COVID.
Yes, I will mention that to the town clerk again, just so, uh, just, you know, because we're in the times that we're on, we are now, right? I will mention it to her, and make sure that we make sure that we do have it on the, uh, boards and commissions list that goes on their agenda, so that, so that they are aware of it.
Yeah.
You just mentioned-
It's important to get us moved up and fill the vacancy.
Yeah, no, no, I'll make sure that we mention it again, and obviously, it's a council decision, but we'll just make sure that that they've got it on their, you know, on their radar.
Yeah, Rick, Rick Chirzak speaking, hey, Amy, you, a minute ago, you had said that, that, uh, the petition for the Dollar Store was on the twenty ninth. What if we get through all of our petitions next week? Are, are we still, are we still having, do we have a separate agenda for the twenty ninth?
There will be.
There will be, oh.
There will be to do at least the, um-
Okay, so we will, so we will absolutely have a meeting on the twenty ninth, even if we, I'm, I'm, you know, I can't believe we're gonna get through all of our petitions, but who knows, I mean, stranger things have occurred, so.
We have a lot of faith in you, Rick.
Good, glad you do. Alright, are we, anything else, Jesse, Jessica?
I, it would just be if you have any questions.
I'm confused, I'm not sure I have questions, but, uh, how about board members, anyone else, anything? No, okay, no, Wayne, nothing, uh, Colleen, anything else?
Yes, did you mention about the, um, the, the unique link that each of the members gets, and then the public link is on the agenda, so if they wanted to share the agenda with folks, email-
No, I didn't. So, when you guys get your invitation, you're getting a panelist invitation. You shouldn't share that with, say, your neighbor who says, oh, I wanna go to that meeting because so-and-so's being heard. Um, as a panelist, you have different access than the public. So if you find someone, or if someone finds you, who wants to join the meeting, the agenda has a direct link for the public to join, and then they would come in as an attendee.
And then the only other thing, I know you folks touched on the, the Q and A, and how you're going to handle that. I don't know if you wanted to show them, if you felt that was necessary to show them what it would look like, because you don't want your members um, answering questions, I don't think, right, do you want them answering?
Right. We, we don't want them answering questions, um, and I believe Amy had spoke in the planning one that if questions are posed that relate to a application, then they become part of the public record, and we don't want it kind of as a free-for-all with people just shooting in questions and all of this. It still needs to hold the same order that a live meeting would. You know, people can't just speak until their, the public comment section is called.
Right, and I think we're all gonna see how that works the first meeting or two, see if people are using it just to indicate technical difficulties, and, or if, you know, the message isn't coming across that this is not a place to submit questions for the board, we may turn that feature off.
Yeah, and that, that is it, it's a total feature we can turn off.
Hey, is there, uh, any, anyone else, any other business, anything?
And then you, you all talked about how your board members, Jess and your staff are on the screen, you see the thumbnail videos, your attendees can see your thumbnails if they're on a computer. Um, but they can't see one another, right, let's just, uh, the, the panelists, you all can see the list of attendees, and then folks, um, that are just watching the meeting, like tuning in. Um, they can raise their hand to speak, but they don't see one another.
Okay.
So there's no video when they're brought in to speak. You, you don't get, you don't see their video. Right, okay.
Alright, okay, alright, well, i- if there's nothing else, would, uh, someone like to make a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Daniel, someone want to second it?
Second.
Second, by who, Mr. Rosen?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, okay, I, I, I feel better. We, we, we made some, uh, we're getting there, I think, so.
We're all on the same screen.
Yeah. And I'll make sure that all of you have my cell phone number. Um, so if you do run into any issues during the meeting, to please text me right away.
I'll give you mine as well.
Okay.
Jessica, you will get me that listing of all the, uh, of the, uh, the objectors so that I can read it in.
Yep.
Record, okay, good.
Alright, and I'll be sending out the agenda tomorrow, um, the actual agenda. The one that you may have gotten in your package is just a, you know, a rough draft of it.
Jessica, did you send, you, I know you sent me an email, a copy of the, the Conservation Commission's, uh, finding on that? That, uh, did everyone else get that?
It should have been in the package.
Oh, okay, alright. Gentlemen, there's a, on that, uh, septic system thing within 150 feet of the wa- the wetlands, there was a positive, uh, report from the Conservation Commission that, that I had asked and Jessica sent it to me. I have, it's, she says everyone should have, so.
And I can send it out again tomorrow with the agenda, just in the event, you know, it's missing.
Jessica, this is Rob Cagnetta. Um, do you, did you send the 315, uh, only on paper and not digitally?
The 315.
The, the, the previous, the March meeting, is that, is that, because we missed that and that was.
Right.
The, uh, agenda and all the, uh, uh, everything that's on the agenda, it was in the paper. It was in what was mailed to us, not emailed to us.
Right, yeah, I haven't, that was the 315 agenda. That's gonna get added to the 422 addenda, agenda. And then you're gonna get a whole new agenda that covers everything.
But all the contents, I'll get digitally, like I don't need to have the paper per se, but I do.
Oh, I sent the link.
You sent the link for that one?
I did send the link, I'm sorry, that's what you were looking for.
Yep.
The other thing to note is if for some reason your links weren't working, if you go to South Kingston's website and go under building and zoning, there's a tab that says current zoning applications and every piece of information we get is now showing there, so.
I have to leave, I gotta say goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'll see you at the meeting.
Alright, alright, well, I, I think we're done, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen. Hey, Colleen, can you hear me?
Ah, sorry, I was muted. Um, did you hit stop recording?
I did.
And then the live stream, you stopped that too?
Oh, no, I didn't know I had to do that.